Just to repeat, as a note, if we do have an emergency, please note the locations of the exits. 1.0, we did that, 4.0. Presentations, we've got our initial 2023-2024 budget. Ms. Phillips, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you. Welcome to the start of the 2023-2024 budget season. Hard to believe, I say that every year, that we're already looking at the next year. Tonight, we will be showing you our initial drafts of four sections of our budget: operations and maintenance, transportation, employee benefits, and debt service. Unfortunately, though the governor has given her state-of-the-state address, we have not yet received state aid runs based on her proposal yet. So usually, we put that on the agenda, and we get it on that Monday, earlier today, and I would have, you know, put something together, but we don't have anything. So I will discuss a little bit about what was in her proposal, but do not have Lancaster specific numbers to share. I would anticipate them being provided at some point soon, so we will present them at the work session that follows those. Tonight also, Judy Feldmeyer, the transportation supervisor, was excused by me for a personal obligation, so I will be representing her when discussing the transportation budget. All of these sections of the budget are initial drafts. This is not the full budget. This is just the first four parts that we usually present. As it is January 23rd, a lot of the items within our budget, both the parts we're going to be discussing tonight, and then our overall budget that we're working on daily, have a lot of room to change. We have a lot of numbers to finalize. We have a lot of budgets for certain areas to get from other sources where they assist. So these by no means are final numbers. We also, tonight, these parts of the budget kind of represent all of our requests, all of our wants, needs, hopes, and dreams in some of these areas. And as we put together a full budget, as we calculate the tax cap, as we receive state aid numbers, as the overall piece comes together, a lot of these things would also be subject to change, where we may look at including only needs, and maybe just some wants or no wants. So always a work in progress. So after tonight's work session, the next work session is February 27th here at William Street School at 6:30. That is where we will present the majority of our budget, the instructional-related sections of the budget. And then the April work session will kind of hopefully be a final draft of the budget, include some final state aid numbers. The budget will be finalized by the board at their regular meeting in April, and then we will be on to the budget vote, which is the third Tuesday in May. All right, the first section that we have to run through with you tonight is the operations and maintenance section. As a reminder, we usually just discuss predominantly the line items that have changed from the current year budget. With respect to the salary codes, which are the first two line items in the operations section, and the first six line items in the maintenance section, those are estimates, and will be shored up as we finalize contracts with our collective bargaining units. So at this point, those are just estimates. And we do not have any staffing requests that are included in any of our presentations tonight. All of our staffing requests will be presented at the next board meeting. So no staffing requests included, and also no money for any staffing requests included in tonight either, so. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bernersky, our director of facilities, to discuss some of the variances within his budget request.
Hi, everyone. So I'll go over the budget codes that we're looking for increases this year. First would be 162200. We're looking at an increase of $40,000 from 22,500 to 62,500 to cover proposed equipment purchases, which include a floor machine for Como Park Elementary, vacuum cleaner replacements throughout the district, as well as a Bobcat loader with a blower to assist with snow removal at the high school in Hillview. Sure.
Sorry.
How's that sound, Mike? Better? Better than? Better? There you go. As I was saying, we're looking for a Bobcat loader with blower to assist with snow removal at the high school in Hillview. As our lot and sidewalk footage has increased, along with the increased amounts of snow that we've been receiving the last few years, our custodians have realized the need for a heavier-duty piece of equipment to clear snow due to the increased breakdowns that our present fleet of snow removal equipment has been experiencing. We've been clearing snow with, for our custodians, with tractors, commercial-grade tractors. And the amount of snow that we've been getting has just been really beating them up pretty bad, so we find ourselves in need of a heavier piece of equipment, and that would be that Bobcat. The next budget code with an increase would be 162400. That one, we're looking at an increase of $9,500 from 92,500 to 102,000. And that's to account for additional casella waste management costs that we incur every year, such as dumpsters or additional recycling totes. 162460 remains at 14,000. 162500, looking at an increase of 25,000 from $275,000 to $300,000 to account for increased cost of our janitorial supplies. This year, the cost of all the supplies has just skyrocketed, and we found ourselves in a hole pretty quickly this year. 1621200, looking at an increase of $79,000 from 155,000 to 234,000. And this is to cover proposed equipment purchases, which include another Bobcat loader with a blower that would be used for the grounds department to load snow, and also to be another piece of equipment to have in reserve for the heavier snowfalls that, again, we've been experiencing. An F-250 plow truck with a fuel tank, and that's to replace T-66, which is a 2014 vehicle that we have in the fleet, which we're still adhering to the Board of Education's commitment to the vehicle replacement plan, and grateful for it, I would say, that we've been following since 2014. Also, we're looking for an F-350 dump truck with a plow that would give us another vehicle to use for salting purposes. As the vehicles age and maintenance costs continue to increase, we find it more economical to auction off the older vehicles and replace it with a newer vehicle. And we've been getting very good money when we auction these vehicles off, I would say. 1621400, we're looking at an increase of $8,750 from 46,250 to $55,000. And this is to account for increased cost of our winter high lift rentals, as well as the increased need and use of contractors. We rent two high lifts for five months from November to March. We park one here at the middle, at William Street, and the other at the high school to clear the heavier amounts of snow and move the snow piles back every winter. 1621460, we're looking for an increase of $76,000. This is from 199,000 to 275,000. And this is to account for the increased need and use of contractors for repairs, as the systems in our buildings continue to get more sophisticated and beyond the scope of our mechanics that we have on staff, and as well for the increased cost of that labor of using the contractors. 1621461, we're looking for an increase of 35,000. And this is to purchase SAVE Act compliant reimbursable items throughout the year, which would include camera replacements, additional cameras, window and door hardening. Up to 35,000 is reimbursable annually through state aid as part of the SAVE Act. 621462, we're looking at an increase of 3,000, and it's to account for increased cost of predominantly mulch replacement of the playgrounds throughout the district. The cost of mulch, everything else has gone up considerably, so every year, we replace the layer of mulch throughout the district. 1621463, looking at an increase of 50,000 to cover the cost of state mandated lead testing throughout our facilities. The testing requirements were recently changed from every five years to every three years, and the acceptable lead action level was decreased from 15 micrograms a liter to five micrograms a liter. Any potable water outlet with lead levels above the five microgram per liter will need to be made unavailable to staff and students, and included in the district remediation plan. Outlets can only be made usable again once post-remediation sampling of the outlet delivers test results that are below the lead action level of five micrograms a liter. So after the testing, we envision ourselves of having to install filters on some of the fixtures, and/or change the fixtures in their entirety. And lastly, 1621500, we're looking at an increase of 68,000, and this, again, is to account for the increased cost of supplies, just as in the other material list, the cost of all the items that we've been purchasing has just skyrocketed. Those were the budget codes that we're looking for an increase for. If there's any questions?
Really, just a thank you for your team and how you handled the snow removal. You know, this, you know, in 2022, just in December, really, or in just a couple of months, we had close to 100 inches of snow, which is, you know, not unprecedented for Western New York, but certainly difficult to deal with, especially in the time span that they came in, and how important it is that we get that, you know, snow removed so we can, you know, safely have school and other, you know, folks here at the district and our facilities. So thank you so much. And certainly, inflation and cost of materials, you know, is skyrocketing everywhere. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
A couple of things to elaborate on within Mike's budget. The utility budget for electricity and natural gas, we are waiting, we have a meeting in a couple of weeks with our consortium. We belong to a consortium through Erie One BOCs, and that is comprised of several school districts. Several school districts, is that better? I'm sorry, it's really loud. Is there a reason it's echoing all of a sudden? Okay. So the consortium, school districts, towns, other municipalities across New York State, but based out of Erie One BOCs. And with that, we are able to pool our purchasing power for electricity and natural gas, and they're actually also dabbling in some solar projects with some of the school districts up north and towns. So we will receive budgets from them in a couple of weeks, so we'll be able to fine-tune these numbers a little bit more, based on what our current year budget is and our performance and what we've paid out so far this year. I believe, don't hold me to this, but I believe what we have budgeted will be enough for the following year. I don't know if you recall, last year, we did have to bump these up quite a bit to meet the new pricing, but the performance has gone better than they expected in terms of utility rates for the consortium. So I do expect that to remain the same, or be able to, you know, come down just a little bit. And then with respect to the SAVE Act and the lead testing, both of those things are state-aidable. What we ideally would like to do is leave that $35,000 for the SAVE Act within our budget. We do capitalize on the reimbursement every year as we can, based out of Mike's budget in other areas. He just purchases camera replacements and new cameras as needed, and then we submit them for the aid. But based on our commitment to safety in this school district, what we would like to see, like having a standing allocation for that full $35,000 each year, and attempt to spend that much on those types of things in each budget year. And then the lead testing will be a one-year expense, which will then have to come back every three years, but that also will be aided by the state in the following year. So we will have the expenditures in 2023. I will submit reports to show them what we actually spent, and then we will be aided, that money back in the following year. Overall, Mike's budget is, at this point, $582,000 budget-to-budget increase. 32% of that increase is contractually obligated salary increases. 20% of that increase is on those equipment items. 15% is related to the lead and the SAVE funds, and 33% of it is just increased in supply and labor costs. The next section of the budget we're discussing is the transportation budget. Not too many areas that changed here, but some significant increases. Beyond the salary increases, same situation with buildings and grounds, still need to be solidified based on collective bargaining agreements, but this is the estimates that we have in there so far. With respect to 5510400, which are contractual expenses for the buses, that is a, just increase in replacement for cameras and just other general contractual expenses that the office has, including their transportation routing software and the software for the gas pumping The 553200 equipment, Judy has requested a snow blower for their property, quite a hefty one. Currently, they are operating using hand-me-downs from other buildings, as we've replaced some of their equipment. And as you can imagine, that location is one of the first areas we have to worry about clearing out, because the first thing that has to happen for school to start the next day is for buses to get out on the road, and just the volume of what needs to be done there, moving, cleaning off buses, moving buses, you know, a fleet of 100, it's quite the undertaking. Additionally, they have requested a couple large fans for the garage area, as it gets quite warm in the summertime. And then also, if there is any liquid that is spilled, or, you know, from washing buses or anything like that, obviously, wet floors become a safety concern. So those are their requests at this point. The contractual expenses in 5530400, those are for the bus garage. And for this current year, we had about $30,000 budgeted for the parking lot to be sealed, which we will complete sometime this spring, and that's a one-time expense. So we were able to take that one-time expense out. On the gasoline budget, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit, 5510504, we looked at what we've been spending in gas. We did up this budget last year for this current school year, and we, with our gas pricing, are well within our current budget. And as you know, gas prices have gone, have hopefully peaked several months ago, and are, you know, on their way slowly climbing down. So we think the budget there is sufficient. The main budget driver here, and increased driver, is our contractual transportation. So as you know, we have our own fleet, but we also contract with local bus company to do some of our special education out-of-district transportation. They currently transport about 60 students to various locations around Western New York. A lot of times, these trips are one student going one way, another student going another way, really pretty impossible for us to accomplish ourselves without adding significant amounts of staff. So their contract is bid out at least every five years, and typically in the bidding process, I don't want to say typically always in the bidding process, the bid pricing ends up being higher than what you were previously paying, but they are able to extend for up to four years after the initial contract at a rate that matches the increase in the CPI, which is right now about 8%. So we are just estimating for that increase. So that is 760 out of the $900,000 increase in this area. So that's about 83% of the overall increase. A lot of times, as we've seen costs increase there, the daily rate for the student transportation, we've been able to look to see what we can accomplish ourselves more efficiently and economically, but we are at a point where we're struggling to staff our in-district runs with our own bus drivers and cover, you know, absences and surgeries and bereavements and things like that that our employees deserve to have. So we don't really foresee being able to make that work in order to cut costs here. So the good news for all of these expenses is that they're all state-aidable. So while there are increases, we will receive transportation aid on our actual expenses incurred in the following year. Any questions on the transportation budget?
Get out of my way. That contractual expenses, is it, I guess, like, when, I know that we take kids to other private schools and things outside the district, and we have a certain mile radius, is that we are obligated to do that? Is that our policy to do that? Like, is there any wiggle room on some of these kids versus not? That's a huge increase, so just wondering what our options are there when people see that increase and ask about it.
That's a great question. Thank you. The kids that attend non-public schools, like parochial schools by parent choice, are not included in this. We transport them ourselves with our own school buses and our own drivers. So these students that are typically transported by our local provider are special education students that have placements to, let's say, Falk or Summit or Camaleashen. So those are per their IAP, and are their, you know, best placements according to their educational needs. So it's hard to change where we need to go on that. On the non-public student, parochial student front, we are obligated by state law to transport students to any non-public schools within a 15-mile radius, as long as they have followed the request procedure, which is by April 1st, they have to have submitted a request. That request form for next year has already gone out to families. Thank you.
Jamie, you talked about the gas pump software. Is that an annual renewal?
Yes, obviously, an initial cost when we had the equipment installed, including a software, but then there's an annual just license fee that we pay.
Got it. And then, just to thank you for all the work that you do to maximize that state aid. You know, I think, you know, every dollar that we spend, we do that judiciously and make sure that it's, you know, advantageous for the entire area. So thank you so much.
It's a lot easier to say yes when you know you're going to get some of it back on the flip side. So we can't talk about transportation without talking about our annual bus purchase. This year, Judy is recommending that we purchase six 65-passenger buses to replace six in our current fleet, and then the addition of one 42-passenger wheelchair-accessible bus. All of these buses are gasoline-powered. We are not moving forward yet with the electric bus requirement. There's a lot of information still to be provided, including funding, infrastructure, utility capacity, all of those things beyond the requirement that was included in last year's budget to be full-electric by 2035. We have really received no additional information. So we are still just sticking with our normal replacement plan for now. So this proposition would be proposition number two, as it usually is, bus purchases separate from the budget, and would be no tax impact because we have a bus purchase reserve, and this total fits within the amount we have reserved for those purchases.
So I know, obviously, there's not a lot of information going on with the electric buses. I've seen a couple articles here and there about it, but we're on a 12-year replacement cycle with buses currently, correct? So do we anticipate that we're going to get any guidance or information within the next, like, year or two? Because I would assume we would probably start replacing them kind of like on the schedule if it, you know, makes sense and is, you know, prudent to do so.
I, that's a great question. I would love information sooner than that, sooner rather than later. Mandated or not, another thing we're going to have to think about is the cost. Within this amount of money, we would probably be able to get about two and a half buses as opposed to seven. So they're about, individually, about three times the cost of one conventional gasoline or diesel-powered vehicle. So as you can imagine, a bigger burden on our taxpayers if there's not grants specific to the, you know, to that, or if we're still just, we do get aid on our bus purchases over a five-year period of time, so every bus, we get aid for each bus, one-fifth each year for five years. But to be going on a replacement cycle that's in kind to our current replacement cycle, there's going to be a large upfront amount of cash we're going to have, and we don't get 100% aid on the buses. We have our transportation aid ratio, which is, I think, about 70-75%. So that 25% is really the cost of one regular bus, if you can think of it that way. So, you know, it's going to be a significant investment, absent some different funding strategies.
I don't want to leave Jamie just answering all the questions either. So, yes, you would hope that they would give us information on that. So I think everyone, including school boards and superintendents and ASBO and transportation supervisors, are advocating for that information to come, and to come quickly, because you did the quick math, and yeah, it's pretty soon, right? If you're going to meet that deadline. But I think there's a lot of politics involved, and there's a lot of other things that need to be ironed out that are, you know, out of our control right here in Lancaster Central School District, but we'll stay on it and then answer those questions soon as they come.
The placement cycle for the premium electric buses is like 50 years, though, so we should be good.
And then, one more question on the electric buses, or, you know, or more, just one from me. I think I heard that a district in Western New York had piloted the electric bus. Have there been any issues with, you know, starting it in the winter?
We were actually just laughing at that, the business officials, on Friday, because, you know, we know how to have a good time. That's what we laugh about. So we heard a lot about districts who had purchased their first electric vehicle, but we have not heard anything about how it's going. So I'm sure we will at some point. I guess the question is battery life, charging stations, cold weather, how it goes on Monday in the winter after. in the winter after, you know, the bus sits at idle. And then another, you know, the battery cost is pretty exorbitant, the replacement batteries, and then the disposing of the batteries apparently isn't worked out. So, there's a lot of things. We like to be the leaders and the pilators in a lot of situations. This may be one that I say we slow-play it just to see how it shakes out for some other locations. Yep, our mechanics will have to go for training, you know, the parts that we have in stock versus what we, you know, may be obsolete at that point. You know, when we built that bus garage, natural gas-fueled buses were kind of the popular thing, and we have some people pushing us to design the garage to facilitate having natural gas-fueled buses. And those have kind of fallen off the radar. So, there's a lot, there's a lot, it's not even just financial. There's a lot to plan for and find out about and test and figure out how it's all going to be sustainable. All right, the third section, where we're going to show a draft of tonight, is the employee benefits section. I would say that this is the section that evolved, has the ability to evolve the most over the next couple of months. A lot of the budget figures that we have are all based on current experience and experience over the last 12 months. So, as we get a couple more months into the budget season, we have a couple more months of actual data on how these things are performing for us in the current year. So, it helps us really revise our numbers. The first two numbers, state retirement and teacher retirement, are the employer, so the district's contributions towards the state pension systems. And those are directly related to two things, our actual salaries of our teachers and our support staff, so how much we end up paying them in their paychecks. And then also, each one of them has a contribution percentage that changes every year. So, for the state retirement system, which is the support staff, that rate is estimated, it's currently 11.6% and is estimated to increase to 13.1%. So, this is basically all of the salaries within the budget that are counted towards the state retirement system multiplied by that estimated contribution rate. So, the tax cap calculation allows for exclusions for both of these expenses if the contribution rate, not the amount we're spending, but if the contribution rate increases by more than 2%. So, for the state retirement system, the estimated rate is 1.5% increase. So, there wouldn't be an exclusion in this year's tax cap calculation for those increased costs. Now, on the flip side, the teacher retirement system works the same way. All of the salaries that can be attributed to the teacher's retirement system multiplied by the estimated contribution rate. This current year's contribution rate was 10.29%, and they've estimated next year's rate to be between 9.5% and 10%. So, we're looking at a decrease in the contribution rate between a half a percent and 0.75%. But with the salary budgets increasing, even though the rate has gone down, the budget still increases there. Social Security is just our FICA Medicare payroll taxes, and the increase there is just related to the salary increases throughout the budget. Our workers' compensation budget is an actual decrease. So, this one is solidified, and we know what we're going to pay next year, and it's about $97,000 less than this current year. Our life insurance, unemployment insurance, and disability insurance budgets are all staying the same. Those don't tend to fluctuate too much from year to year. Our medical insurance, we're estimating a 15% increase in premiums. We will be solidifying that through the month of February, so this one is likely to change a bit. Our 105H health plan figures, this is contractually an amount that we contribute to 105H plan to certain employees who select a certain health plan, a lower-priced health plan. And based on enrollment in that health plan, we just need some more money in that budget. We're not budgeted for the number of employees that we have selected, that have selected that plan. Our dental and vision, we're estimating a 5% increase in both of those premiums. So, on the flip side, a lot of these areas, expense areas, have reserve funds attributed to them. So, we have an ERS reserve fund, a TRS reserve fund, an unemployment reserve fund, and a workers' compensation reserve fund. So, some of the increase, some of the overall premiums that we have here in the budget can then be offset on the revenue side with some, with the use of some of those reserve funds. So, we'll see that at the April board meeting when we go detailed through our revenue sources. Any questions on the employee benefits? All right, and our last section tonight is our debt service fund. So, this is all of our principal and interest related to debt, related to our capital construction projects over the last 15 years. So, we do have a significant increase here, but it's as we get further and further into our 17, or 77.1 million-dollar project, we're paying more our principal and interest spend, you know, paying down that project's expenses. So, on the revenue side, we receive building aid for a lot of these, for all of these expenses. So, a big portion is offset on the revenue side by our building aid. We also budget money from our debt service reserve to go towards this. So, all of that increase is really not going to impact anything because we're offsetting it. The 9713, yep, 9713-600, so that $472,000 amount is year three of a three-year BOCs capital project contribution that the board approved three years ago. So, this will be the last year we see an expense in that line item, and we do receive BOCs aid back on those expenses too. This budget, while its draft, is not likely to change anything. But what you will see at the budget meeting in April when we present the reserves is, or the revenues, is to see how our building aid, our BOCs aid, and our debt service reserve offset all of these expenses. Any questions on the debt service? All right. So, I have a little to talk to you about state aid. Like I said, no figures on our end. Governor Hochul, state of the state, made it very clear that they were remaining committed to fully funding the foundation aid formula as they started two years ago. So, as we all know, we were one of the districts within New York State that had its lowest funding ratio compared to its formula. A couple of years, a few years ago, they made an effort to get everyone to at least 75% funded compared to their formula, and that's where we sat. So, we have received significant foundation aid in the last two years, and we expect it to be kind of capped off for next year and finally getting us to our foundation aid formula amount. I'm estimating that to be about $4 million of an increase. That is the only number I can estimate for you at this time. Other things, the education of the portion of the budget, I feel like, at least, maybe because it's my occupation, but it's usually one of the big, most contested or, you know, talked about portions of the budget. It often comes under attack by either the governor or, you know, some of the other constituents there. But it was pretty low-key this year. Yep, we're going to fund your foundation aid. Yes, we're going to keep all the other formula aids the same, you know, nothing under attack, no, no things out of left field that we, you know, didn't anticipate at all. In addition to the fully funding foundation aid, they're attempting to allocate more money to universal pre-K, whether that be to our existing funding or whether it be competitive grants, we're not sure about that yet. They are looking to expand mental health services for school-aged children. So, we're not sure what will come with that. Supporting cooking facilities that help facilitate the use of New York State farm products in preparing meals for K-12 schoolchildren. And then also some changes to civil service law that is actually to our benefit, but not monetarily, to improve that system and allow us to more easily recruit and hire individuals for certain positions. So, all in all, we wait for that proposal to come out figure-wise, but I think we really know what to expect aside from the foundation aid. Our other aids are really based on formulas, and we should, you know, kind of expect those to be in line with what we're receiving this year. With, usually, the education package is one of the holdouts for the budget being approved and finalized at the end of March. This year, last year, I believe it was tied to legalization of marijuana. That was kind of the sticking point of an on-time budget. And this year, it won't be education. I believe it will be bail reform and gun control. That, there may not be problems with the education portion, but some of our finalizing, the state finalizing the budget and our figures being released will probably depend on how those talks are going.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. All right, that is it for tonight. So, on to 5.0. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.